The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for an accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call (866) 270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shut-off valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at (866) 270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at (847) 599-2997.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January 4th, 2016 City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May. Alderman Velco. Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Cunningham.
I'm here.
Alderman Ziegler.
Present.
Alderman Moizio. Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Bishop Colburn, please.
Father, we thank you again for another City Council meeting. We thank you for the first Monday in 2016. Before we ask you anything, we want to thank you for 2015, the blessing in Waukegan. We see things moving, cities moving, and we thank you for it. We thank you for our mayor, for this council, for all people that are in charge. Pray your blessing upon all of our citizens. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
About a month ago, I scheduled a meeting with the Civil Service Commission. A Civil Service Commission will meet on the 7th of this month at 6 o'clock at City Hall. At that meeting, we will discuss issues prevalent to the promotion, demotion, and the list for candidates for police and fire. I have a detailed list of questions from the Citizens for Progress. I read them. They were very good and adequate suggestions, questions. So please feel free to attend the meeting here on the 7th at 6 o'clock. Second thing I'd like to bring up, I had a meeting today with David Marion. David runs our building department upstairs, and I was very pleased to hear the following. The residential additions and altercations to the City of Waukegan brought in $17,799,553 for 3,260 projects. New commercial construction, $20,620,661 on four projects. Commercial additions and altercation, alterations, $110,698,413 for 328 projects. Total revenue to the City of Waukegan last year, $149,118,628.47. We have not done this well since 2007. So if this were an indication where we're headed, it's good. David, do you have something to say? No, David Marion, please.
I just wanted to clarify a fact. The fact is investment, the construction value invest, investment, not necessarily the revenue. That's the construction value investment.
Okay, construction price.
Yes, sir.
So that's 149 million.
Yes, that's the reinvestment in Waukegan.
And that's the best since 2007?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Motion to approve the regular minutes of the December 21st, 2015 by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Ziegler. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution, proclamation, presentation, appointments? Appointment of Martin Nevin Walker to the 911 Board. Mr. Nevin was suggested as a candidate for this position. I've interviewed him, I spoke to him, as has our Corporation Counsel. Steve Martin has worked with this gentleman. He is a very, very well-versed man. I think he'll be a great addition to the 911 Board. Mr. Walker, would you like to step up, please? And just make a little presentation for us.
Sure. First, I just wanted to thank the City of Waukegan for this opportunity. Thank you to the 911 Board, to the mayor. I have deep roots in Waukegan. I was born and raised here, went to Cook Magnet, grew up right on the corner of Brookside and Tiffany, next to West High School, as it was at the time. And I just look forward to serving the city, and I just want to thank everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. A motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve the appointment of Martin Nevin Walker. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May. Aye. Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. Item B.
Your Honor, real quick, maybe a quick subna-- what does the 911 Board do? There's no confusion between that and the Civil Service Commission. I've had some questions from some people. Does the 911 Board hire police?
No.
Does it dispen police?
No.
Does it have anything to do with any personnel issues with the police or fire department?
No, it works strictly on the communications of the 911 Board itself.
It basically spends the tax dollars that 911 gets--
Correct.
--that they get and decides what to do with those-- if anybody looks at their tax, at their phone bill, there's a 911 tax on that that comes directly to the City of Waukegan, and then it goes to the 911 Board, and they decide what to do with that money. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you. Item B, reaffirm the appointments of Edward Navarro to Police Commander and Mark DeRose to Fire Battalion Chief. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. Next is a presentation by the Waukegan Main Street.
Good evening. Arthur Cobb, Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street. Like to extend a Happy New Year to Mr. Mayor and the Aldermen and to the guests here in the audience. Tonight, I'm providing two updates on previous presentations. First, the 2016 Monty Grag Casino Night, as a reminder, is February 6th from 6:00 to 10:00 at Bonnie Brook Golf Course, 2800 North Lewis Avenue in Waukegan. Tickets for this event will be at the same prices as last year, $60 for Waukegan Main Street Partners and $70 for non-partners. For more information, I would recommend that you please call the Main Street office at (847) 623-6650. Second, several landlords in the business district were contacted by Main Street and the Business Roundtable Group requesting permission to clean their windows and sidewalks, as well as place artwork in the windows. Landlords were very receptive to our proposal and request and have agreed to help keep the area clean and attractive for our visitors and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Committee reports, Economic Development Committee, Alderman May.
Thank you, Mayor. The Economic Development Committee met on December 21st, and I'd like-- the Economic Development Committee recommends the motion to approve the Waukegan Lakefront Active Implementation Plan presented by Edgewater Resources, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. Thank you. Tonight, we had a Special Labor Relations Committee. As you know by now, we just affirmed the Edgewater Plan for the lakefront. Because that occurred, I had to reappropriate money, and at this point, I'm going to ask the council to hire a lakefront coordinator to run the program that we're going to institute from Edgewater. So the motion, motion to amend ordinance 15027, fixing the salaries and wages to be paid to a management and non-management employees of the City of Waukegan, salary structure as followed. Create lakefront development coordinator position Tier 6. This salary will start at $55,141. This person will run the lakefront and follow Larry Desmond, Gary Desmond's plan for lakefront development, as well as the Edgewater Plan. Many of you may not know this, I don't think anyone knows it as of yet, but over the Memorial Day weekend in Waukegan, we are going to have a three-day weekend, starting out with Ted Nugent, followed by Georgia, Georgia State Line, and the headliner for that weekend will be Kid Rock. So they will be here Memorial Day weekend to play on our lakefront. They expect 70,000 people a night for three nights. So now you know how much, how serious we are about lakefront development. We are going to make that place a destination location, believe me. Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Motion-- motion by Alderman-- by me, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. Special Finance Committee meeting, Alderman Velco, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance Committee met this evening and authorized the proper city officials to waive the competitive bid requirement per the city code, Section 2-458, subsection I, subsection 7, based on a good faith recommendation by the Director of Information Technology due to Cybernetics' prior experience with the city data storage system and favorable equipment trade-in terms to expand and upgrade the city's data storage and archiving system for a total contract amount of $49,260. And the funds will be coming from budget codes 100-103726495 and 100-301926495. For those of the Aldermen that weren't here, and for those in the audience, our data system at the time, presently is running at 75% capacity, so this will allow us for another five or six years to get up to speed. And also, the Director of Information Technology got the Cybernetics to accept the trade-in of our current system of, I believe, over $16,000. Henceforth, the amount of $49,260, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. There is no old business. There are no reports in communications. New business, item A, approval of payroll dated December 24th, 2015, in the amount Fire holiday correction for November 26th, 2015, dated December 14th, 2015, in the amount of $21,642.84. Police swarm uniform allowance dated December 18th, 2015, in the amount of $82,955. Police uniform allowance dated December 18th, 2015, in the amount of $60. PBLC holiday buyback pay dated December 24th, 2015, in the amount of $4,258.8. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Taylor. I'm sorry, Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. Item B, approval of bills dated January 4th, 2016, in the amount of $1,608,814.14. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. Item C, motion to authorize the release of certain executive session minutes which have been reviewed and make seem available to public inspection. Set inspection and release is pursuant to Illinois Open Meetings Act 5 ILS ILCS 120-2.06D. David, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, I sent all of you an email explaining why this next item is important. Item D, approval or extension of the contingency contract with Thomas J. Fitzgerald for the purchase of certain real estate under all existing terms of the original contract dated July 18th, 2013, and extending until August 18th, 2014, to change the termination date to December 31st, 2016. Are there any questions on this? No questions? Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Villalobos. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye. Next item, I'd like to read something before we go to audience time. This is the Rules of Decorm for the City Council Meeting, Section 2-65.1. The presiding officer shall conduct the city council meeting in an orderly manner. No person in the audience shall engage in disorderly conduct, including any act that disturbs, disrupts, or otherwise impedes an orderly, orderly conduct of any council meeting or the presentation of any speaker. During the public comment portion of the city council meetings, if any, all public comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Individuals are directed to be brief and concise in making their remarks and to address topics directly relevant to business of the city council. The presiding officer, after one warning, may rule any individual addressing the city council out of order if the individual, number one, becomes repetitive, number two, exceeds the three-minute limitation, number three, makes personal attacks against others, number four, makes rude or slanderous remarks, number five, becomes threatening and boisterous, number six, engages in electioneering for candidates or otherwise interferes in the orderly and dignified conduct of the meeting. If ruled out of order and is found to be, by the chair, to be out of order, the individual may be barred from further remarks at the city council meeting and barred from further attendance at that meeting. This ruling of the chair can be overridden by a two-thirds vote of the Aldermen present. Nothing herein intended to limit or restrain negative, positive, or neutral comments about the manner in which an individual employee, officer, official, or city council member carries out his or her duties in public or in private. So basically, what I'm saying to you is if you get up there and make an ass of yourself, I'm going to make you sit down. So, that being said, Mary Kay Larson. Mary Kay Larson.
Your Honor, before we go on, a question for you. I noticed that the audience time was moved from the beginning of our agenda to the bottom. Was that-- the last time we did this, I thought we did it through ordinance. Was there something--
Well--
Was there a reason why we moved it to the bottom of the agenda?
I thought it was, I thought it was more appropriate, and I, to tell you the honest, to tell you the truth, I didn't like the way our city council meetings were being conducted with the disruption at the beginning of the meeting. I wanted, I didn't want a negative connotation to the city council meeting, so I moved it to the end. So the people who, who do conduct themselves can do it at the end of the meeting, and the Aldermen can still hear their complaints or concerns.
All right, and I'm only going from what happened with us last time. Steve, it helped me out. There was an ordinance passed in order to move it from--
No, no.
I'm only giving you what happened when I was here. When we moved it from the bottom to the top, we did that on a council vote. So I want to make sure we're in--
We're good.
That's all I'm asking. I'm just remembering, last time, when we did it last time, Steve, that's how it happened, and you weren't Corporation Counsel at the time. So that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Larson?
Hello.
Start with me.
Are you ready?
Proceed, please.
Hello, my name is Mary Kay Larson. I'm the president of Fat Cat Rescue. What we are here for is to find out, we know there was a narcolepsy done on a kitten that was hung from a tree that we have decided to name Sweet Sarah. What we're trying to find out is what the result of the narcolepsy was, and we also know that a detective, Neil, is heading up an investigation. We're just asking for information and to be updated, because people that I deal with and that I am around are over the top over this hanging of this kitten. We just want to know what happened, how it happened, and why it happened, and I believe you have the information to give us, so we're asking for transparency for this kitten. And I know, Ms. May, it happened in your ward, and I'm hoping you can tell us something to make us know a little bit more about it, and that's what we're here for, and we offered a $1,200 reward to find out for the arrest and the conviction of anyone who did this animal cruelty act to this kitten.
Ma'am, the, I did talk to the chief today, and if you'd like to tomorrow, he is not available tonight.
Okay.
But please feel free to call him and talk to him. He has the information that you're requesting.
Okay, chief who?
Chief Walls.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Clyde Mclemore.
Seems like this council haven't heard anything which has been said here. On July 17th, 2014, Staten Island, New York, Mr. Eric Gardner, 43 years old, was choked to death for standing on a street corner for selling single cigarettes. On September 10th, 2015, Michael P. Donaldsworth was outside the Genesee Theater selling cans of beer for $2 a can. On December 10th, Mr. Donaldsworth admitted that he sold the beer outside the Genesee Theater in the Lake County Newsome. Now I ask each and every one of you Aldermen and women to do your job and pressure the mayor and the Waukegan Police Chief to arrest Mr. Donaldsworth, as I would hope you would do in any other person, person that's breaking the law. Which, which was, which you was voted to do and upheld. Aldermen, Aldermen and women, I have to put a demand on you, because your Mayor Motley and Mike, Mike Donaldsworth are friends. I have Mr. Donaldsworth employee records right here, and in it, it says that on July 17th, 2014, he left the coroner's office at 12:45, not returned at 5:30. When asked by a supervisor, where he was, he said he was with Mayor Motley. They checked his time, and he did not sign out for it. He was written up again, again, stealing from the taxpayers. Mr. Motley, as mayor, do you understand the Open Meetings Act? If so, are you having, why are you still having secret meetings? So as I see it, you don't want to follow the law. You are on some dictatorship. I will explain the law. When a mayor appoints a committee, there should be minutes and a 24-hour open schedule, general provision, Illinois Law 5ILSC, SCS 120 Open Meetings Act. The people's business, and the people have a right to be informed as to the conduct of their business. Meeting means any gathering, so your meeting with the JOD was out of line. And I, and I ask, did any of your, did any of you Aldermen attend that meeting? If none of you attended, then it was some dictatorship, or was the press release a lie? So, Mr. Motley, is the Department of Justice investigating the police, the Waukegan Police Department?
No.
Ain't what the newspaper said.
Newspapers are-- Ralph Peterson.
That was 20 years ago. Tonight, the word illusion comes to mind. The reason why that word comes to mind is the mayor called the feds in, is what I read in the paper. Well, most of us, when we hear the word feds, we get kind of excited. But my question is, that department, that branch that you called in, do they have subpoena power? Because if they don't, their investigation, or whatever it is, whatever reason you called them in for, is only as good as the information that come from you guys, and it is well-known no burglar gives his criminal agenda to those that's in a position to catch him. Now, the next word that comes to mind is cronyism. The mayor stated to these fine women who are-- The mayor stated to these fine women, who are animal rights activists, he stated that the raccoon killing by a good man, in my eyesight, I have no problem with Alderman Tempest. In fact, I hear good things about him all the time, even though I'm not in agreement with his actions. He told these fine ladies that it was turned over to the Department of Conservation. Well, audience, the Department of Conservation, their mission statement is to get one to comply. You may get a ten, fifteen, twenty-dollar fine for paperwork, but they have no teeth. So now, here's where I'm going with this when I say cronyism. There sits in jail, as we speak, a Juan Rositas for these very same actions. So I ask you, Mayor Motley, do citizens get that same luxury as being turned over to the conservative department? Now, lastly but least, is a question, which is why I bring in mops and brooms, so we can clean it up. What makes a G.I. Joe, what makes a officer like him go rogue? I'll tell you what makes a officer, what helps him go in that direction. We'll start off with the good friend of Mayor Motley, Kokorkian. He had put in a little while back...
Sir, you are in violation of 2-65.1, 3 and 4...
He may not agree with me, but I have a right to speak and say what I'm saying.
You may sit down, sir.
Kokorkian put in for...
Officer, would you escort him from there, please?
And what happened, we found out that this gentleman lied, lost all his integrity. And you want me to tell you what the mayor did? So, he didn't make him chief.
Just escort him, please.
What he did was, he turned around, and he made him commander. Now, let's take it even further.
Sir, would you please leave the podium?
Do you know a cap... Do you know a...
Time is up. Time is up. Mr. Blanks?
September 8th, Mayor, you called in your record, the community block grant partner, Mr. Robinson, to explain the process of what was going on with Ms. Mary Reese's home. Also during that meeting, since he brought up Glennich, you went on record to say that Mr. Glennich, you was on special assignment with him, and that you found him to be a very passionate and great man. And you also went on to say that you also endorsed Mr. Robinson's desire, in saying that there was nothing wrong that was done on the house of Ms. Reese. And I told you that I was sure that there was things that could have been done correctly. But we've come to find out in the future, Mayor, that during the course of that time, you was wrong about what. That no, Mr. Glennich wasn't a great and passionate man, as it has been, as we have discovered now. And we have also come to find out, with me bringing in the federal government, that definitely things could have been done a lot differently when it came to Mrs. Reese. So I'm there, you know, I'm glad to see things are moving along. But I would say, Mayor, that since you agreed, and Mr. Robinson, Robinson, said nothing was done wrong to Mrs. Reese's house in you guys' eyes, it gives one, it gives one reason to know and to say. There's definitely room to say that we need to look back and to see how many other senior citizens was done with a change order and without them being talked to. Because we had change orders that happened, and Mrs. Reese wasn't even in on it. Nobody notified her. So we need to know how many other citizens, senior citizens, that this has happened to, that you all think it was all right, but there was definitely something done wrong. We need to see how many look back and correct. We even need to go back and see what Mr. Bronfield did. Because as I expressed to you all, when you all tore this man's house down, and that is for those who have been here for more than ten years and voted on this, this is to exclude any of those new aldermen that are here, definitely, you could have took a different approach. You know, you didn't go and give this man a fine or a fee or violation. You tore a man's house down, and I told you all, you could have done that differently. So we need to go back and maybe look at, maybe we need to consider what you feel in Mr. Bronfield's house, since you're looking at building better relations with the community. And to be honest with you, Mayor, I'm not going to drop the whole ball and wax of injustice and excessive force in your lap, because there have been people, anybody, who have been an elected official in this city for more than ten years, who have watched this hypocrisy go on, because I've been in this city council chamber more than ten whole years, telling you all about the issues that you are now, just now addressing because of this article, but for at least a decade.
Thank you.
Some of the things that I brought up...
Thank you, Mr. Blanks.
You guys could have done this a long time ago. You had...
Thank you, Mr. Blanks.
... elected officials who have watched this situation go on.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks.
And it's... ... to vote for or support anybody to be mayor...
Okay, thank you.
... been here more than ten years that have...
Alderman's time, Maria?
Alderman May?
Alderman May?
I just want to encourage everyone, want to back up what Arthur Cobb said from Waukegan Main Street, to attend their Mardi Gras function on February 6th. It's a great event to support, it's our big fundraiser for the year, so I hope everyone gets a chance to go on February 6th to Waukegan Main Street's Mardi Gras event. My only other comment is, tonight, I want to thank the council for unanimously supporting the Lakefront Active Implementation Plan, and also for supporting Mayor Motley's motion to assign a position to that implementation process. It shows his commitment to the lakefront, and it shows the council's commitment to developing our lakefront, so I think we're making moves in the right direction. And I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and that's all I have.
Alderman Valco?
I'll pass this evening, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Again, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and to remind people that you can put out your Christmas trees this week until January 24th, but start this week. Many of you have taken your trees down, put them out with your regular garbage, and we'll pick them up. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham?
Happy New Year to the mayor, my colleagues on council floor, to our department heads and city staff, more importantly, the citizens of Great Waukegan. I look forward to working with everybody to make our city great, but congratulations. Thank you.
Alderman Ziegler?
I'd like to thank Public Works Water Department. We had two water main breaks today in the second ward, Lewis and Doug Dale, and right in front of Thomas Jefferson Junior High School. You know what? These guys give it hell, and I've got to, I've got to speak up and say what's on my mind right now. I know what it is to get down in the dirt, but they did a very good job, and I want to thank them, every one of those men. And Tom Haggerty, you're sitting back there. Thank you, sir. Very fine job. Handled it very well. That's it. Happy New Year, everybody, and be safe. Thank you.
Alderman Moizio?
Yeah, just a couple of things. My opinion on Alderman's time has never wavered since I sat on the council. It's the people's government. Let them talk for three minutes. I don't care, good, bad, or indifferent. I don't want to be going to court over... I don't care how silly or hurtful it is, it's our job to take it. I don't want to end up in court over silliness. I just want to make sure that, that everything that we read about that is legal, I don't want to end up in court and pay lawyers over the fact that we can't take a few barbs here and there. That's always been my attitude since I've been up here. Your job up here is to listen to people, again, good, bad, or indifferent. So I just want to make that clear. The other thing is echo Alderman May's comments about finally getting a position, someone who can coordinate the lakefront, at least have a point person for activities and other things down there. We need that. We've always said up here, I think all of us have said, that that's our most valuable resource down there, or one of them, besides the good people of Waukegan, that, and we don't put the responsibility, because money equals responsibility. We have everybody else down here, everybody else in the city running around there trying to make things happen down there in work, and kudos to Alderman May, since she became an alderman, she just took her own personal thing to the lake, and she's organizing cleanups and things, and that's not the way to run. That's not the way to run a city or a business or anything like that. So now, I think with this new position, at least we have a point person in the city who we can point to and say, hey, get this done, help with this, help with that, and get some money and responsibility put in to our most valuable resource and make things go. Now, the salary on it's not, again, I echoed that, it's not, it's not a highly paid position as far as if you're really bringing in someone who's going to bring in development and things like that. So I don't want people to get caught up in that, just because it says lakefront developer. I think we've yet to flush out the responsibilities of this person, and I think those will sort of grow and become more evident as time goes, so I don't think we need to overload this person with all, too many things, but it shows a start that we're trying to get some things done down there. And Mayor, I'm glad we got it done. It's been a long time in the making. Alderman May, you can enjoy your summer a little bit better now?
Yeah.
I hope. Thank you.
Alderman Villalobos? Yeah. Excuse me. So today, basically, I mean, there's a lot done about the lakefront today, and that's exciting to me. Edgewater's implementation plan is basically all fourth ward. As a representative of the ward, I feel very blessed to come into office brand-new, knowing that there's a history of our lakefront and to see if we're moving, make the steps come to fruition. I get the fortune to be in office while this all happens and to help move it forward to and add whatever I can in the process, because our lakefront is one of the major gems that we have in our community. Not every community is a lakefront community, and we have that for us. So, I think we did a lot today, and moving forward, what we're trying to do, I want to be, Mayor Motley, I want to be as much part as possible, so I look forward to more dialogue with you about our lakefront plan. So I'm really excited about what's going to happen for us in the near future. I'm excited already about next summer season and what we're going to do with our lakefront. So, 2016, I think is going to be one of those starting years for us, where a lot of changes are going to be happening, and I love change in our community, and I love change, so I'm excited for it. Thanks again, thank you so much. Alderman Newsom? Alderman Tempest?
Well, just my thoughts as we enter the new year. I really feel that the city is moving forward, and I look forward to the coming new year as we continue to move this community forward, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for your leadership. That's it, thanks.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsom, to adjourn. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Me adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
The city of Waukegan is replacing about twenty thousand water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call 866-270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo. The PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than thirty minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at 866-270-9629, or the City of Waukegan City Collector at 847-599-2997.